I'd like to offer the prayer and the pledge of allegiance. Heavenly Father, please watch over us during this season. Keep us safe. Watch out for our first responders. Keep them safe. Have them put their families first and their duties alongside. Make sure that we do everything the way that you would have us do in your will. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the popular Constitution. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Camera, could you please give your attention?
We can read the Freedom of Information Act. Freedom of Information Act. Please comply with the Freedom of Information Act. Notice of this meeting as intended will provide to all news media and persons requesting notification. Is there anyone signed up for the...
Commissioner Brown Crouch?
Yes.
Commissioner Clifford?
Here.
Commissioner Engelman?
Here.
Commissioner Lawton?
Here.
Commissioner Platt?
Here.
Commissioner Poston?
Yes.
Commissioner Woolsey?
Here.
Is there anyone signed up to speak for the regular meeting?
Yes, Susan Milliken. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Susan Milliken. I live at 762 Prince Andrew Drive. I have a very dear friend who was extremely upset about receiving a new account charge on her account due to the unfortunate situation of the divorce. She has lived in the same house for nine years. She's here by, she can tell you all about this. But in very nice emails and communications from Chief Siebel and from others here at the PSD which she shared with me, Ms. Engelman and others, it just, you all have this ordinance called the Use and Rate Ordinance which charges a new account fee. And what I guess I'm concerned about is for anyone who's deceased, I almost lost my husband in March. I looked back and actually, I pay the bills, but most of our bills are in his name. Oddly, our PSD bill is in both our names. I'm not really sure how that happened because we set everything up at the same time 22 years ago. But all the rest of our utilities are in his name. It was my understanding that S, E, and G, Charleston Water, do not charge this account change fee that's in your Use and Rate Ordinance, but the PSD does. We have so many people in our neighborhood where younger sons and daughters of older James Islanders are living in their parents' home, buying their parents' home or, you know, changing ownership. So I'm just concerned that perhaps y'all could go back in with legal counsel and look at this Use and Rate Ordinance and the new account fee and see if there's anything you can do with the $30 in special cases like death, divorce, other unfortunate occurrences, and see what you can do to waive that fee or to give people nine days to appeal that fee or anything else you can do to help out folks in unfortunate situations. Thank you.
Are there any other speakers signed up?
Yes, Lindsey Hemmerich. Hi, my name is Lindsey Hemmerich. I live at 715 London Drive. To kind of, you know, explain a little bit further what Susan was talking about, yeah, the last year has been horrible. Finally wrapped that up a few weeks ago. But, you know, my bill was in my husband's name initially because he needed a little bit of credit improvement, a little history of bill pay. But, you know, I sent, I mailed a check every month to him with my bank account. Y'all got a check from Bank of America with, you know, Donna Lindsey Hemmerich on it every month in my account. And, you know, so I did the bill for the $30 fee, which I didn't even know after he forwarded his address and moved over to Rivlin Terrace, then all the bill went to his name. So he ended up having to like settle up with the old, I guess, to open his, you know, account over there, which I assume he also got a $30 fee for. And so, but like Susan was saying, I've been in my same house owning it for nine years. I've been paying the bill. When I called to get it changed, they said, okay, well, you can have, I'll give you a new account number for one week. But then we have a new accounting system, so we're changing everything over next time anyways. So I had to go back into bill pay, change it twice. Just, that just rang true to me. Y'all changed it for everybody and had to, you know, I don't know why I had to pay $30 to have that bill and that new account number for one month. And yeah, like Susan was saying, I mean, when I called and spoke to whoever, I think it was the CFO of the PSD, he explained, well, you know, when you go through S, E, and G or the water company, they all have. No, they don't. No, they don't. The most irritating one to me was Charleston Water asked for a, the front page of my divorce decree. That was it. You know, I had to email them something. That was it. But no, I mean, it seems like, and I was a, also I owned rental properties in Columbia for 11 years, right next to USC. I switched that water bill backwards and forwards and the power bill every year. Every year college student turned over, I was never charged. So I just think it's an unnecessary burden. And also, excuse me, when I did call to, and, you know, to have the change made, I wasn't told that there was going to be a $30 fee. And I guarantee I wouldn't remember that. I would have been just as irritated as I was when I got the bill installed. So like Susan was saying, I think there should be some, you know, understanding of life situations that change when not a whole lot's changed. I mean, the name of the account had to change. And another thing that when Susan and I were talking earlier, now there's no history of my, you know, usage or I don't, you know, I can't look back the latest bill I got, which was $101 suddenly when I hadn't gone over 60 all year. There, it doesn't say what my previous amount was. Like I have no record of how my history's been in my house. So I think y'all should really reconsider this. I paid it. I would love to be refunded it. But for anybody else, particularly a widow, I think that y'all should reconsider the $30 fee.
The next item is the Consent Agenda for the Solid Waste Committee meeting that was held on November 25th. The summary was in the packet. Have you read, have you read over them?
Second.
So A and B?
A and B.
A and B.
Didn't we pretty much agree that it's consolidated and all?
Yes.
Any discussion?
Commissioner Brown Crouch?
Yes.
Commissioner Clifford?
Yes.
Commissioner Engelman?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawton?
Yes.
Commissioner Platt?
Uh.
Commissioner Poston?
Yes.
Commissioner Woolsey?
Yes.
Commissioner Carribean?
The next item is the November 2019 James Allen Public Service District Management Report.
Okay, that should be in your packet. If anybody has any questions, I will attempt to answer them. Also, for the fire station, the fire station's movement along, all that dirt that you see, like we talked about last time, is on there to weigh down the dirt that's underneath to make sure we have a good foundation to build on. We'll be on there for about 30 days. We're about a week or two into that. And once that 30 days is done, they'll remove that dirt and move on. And the project is on schedule.
I just have one question. Do we have any other expected charges regarding the origin?
Not, no, we know, no, everything is recorded. Thank you. And I met with Dominion Energy today. David Hoffman and I did. And I have a map just of the public service district service area. Weirdly enough, it doesn't include the town or the cities in there that we service them. But it is where they will be tree trimming. I have that map if anybody wants to look at that. They're going to start the second week of January at the Harborview Fort Johnson area and then go through there. So if anybody wants to see the map, I will make it available to you.
Yeah, we should be able to perhaps email it to us.
It's too big of a file.
Yeah, so.
That's what I was wondering.
I thought they already work in all of New Orleans.
So anyway, I did ask for a map that showed everything and they said they would give us.
The town had hired the Harbors to go along there and watch them. Superbowl.
Well, the company that they have, Lou Miss Tree. Lou's Tree, they're really pretty good. And they're especially, worked well with Walter. And, you know, they pick everything up as soon as they cut it. So he's really happy with that.
So the whole lot of it, the whole Walter responsible and we have three, sorry.
No, you own Dominion.
What is going to be watching?
Expedal.
Two, innocent report. And y'all to the right. 2020 includes overtime and $30,000 in additional expenses.
We bought some additional chainsaws and James, do you know exactly what all is in that? No, I can certainly send that to you, Crystal. There was different, you know, things purchased, additional fuel. I know, you know, one thing right off the top of my head was chainsaws that we bought.
They love chainsaws, don't they?
Yes, we bought three additional chainsaws.
How much did it cost?
Around $400.
We think it's too much?
$30,000 that add up.
No, right. But Mr. Game, he can get that out to you guys tomorrow morning.
And I figured he also included the day off that was given.
No, the day off just went into their bank annually. And then, you know, if we, like in the fire department, say, it might cost us overtime or whatever, but nowhere else would it cause overtime.
But to what account is it charged?
James, what account? It's not charged to the account that is booked in there. Right, it's just booked in there annually. So there's an other account that it's charged to. In the fire department, if that would have caused overtime, then it would be a charge to our extra overtime account.
Thank you. The budget calendar, James Game, Chief Financial Officer.
Thank you. I think you all got that in your packet. I think you can see that we expedited that a little bit to try to set out June 30th as our end date. Try to end it in April when we get it approved. And if you notice the color code, hopefully you've got a color, we're able to see it, color where we want the commission involved and we want you involved in all the meetings if you want to be, you're welcome to any of them. But we're starting it this week and we're hoping to wrap it up in April. So we've expedited, but we've also expanded some of the meetings. And Chris and I will go over this in detail. Just want to see if you have any questions.
I have one kind of in this round. Couple months ago, Chief Siebel asked to have the January meeting to have a, straight down, she's of what departments asked for in our budget last year and where they actually stand in funds now. Are we getting that in January?
We can do that. Yes, ma'am. You want what they asked for and what, say that one more time.
I want to see what's allocated in last year's budget.
Okay, I'll do it, okay.
And what they spent.
And what they, where they stand now.
They had a schedule behind.
And you want to wait till January? Because we can do that if you want it now. Or we can wait till, have six months in, January 1st.
What do you want?
We can write down January.
January would be halfway. I'm fine with that. I just want to see like this department, and I'm not going to say where's it.
By line by line, sure.
Here's how much money you have left. Because you know, they do this in the federal government because you get to the budget column and they go, you have too much money left. You can't have that next year.
All right.
And that's what.
Okay, sure, that's not a problem.
Is it okay to ask a question here? Last year, it's one of the CIP presentations, wasn't that where we had the, what the departments were asking for and what we had to do?
Ask that why, it's correct. Capital improvements, right? And then David does a separate capital improvements for the fuel system. Right, we get both in one, right. Thank you.
The next item is the motion to adopt a proposed changes to the Commission Rules and Procedure Ordinance 1. As you know, we've been through several series of these. We've done revisions. There, if there's any little grammatical tics, we will go over that again. But that's where we're at.
So far, so good.
Second.
Meredith made the motion and then I'll let her second it because she just talked lower. Sorry.
One, is it discussed at times?
Yes.
It's four of a comment and it's good. I'm going to vote on this, of course. But sometimes I wonder why you make change just for the sake of making change because it's not always necessary. And that kind of concerns me that, you know, we just attacked it from a broad spectrum, you know. Last January, we said, that attorney's fired. This one's higher. You're out of chair. He's in a chair. Sometimes you don't need to make change just to make change.
Your point is, what is your point?
Just. I'm just saying, you know, when you go into the same sometime, all the bath water that may be changed after every bath, but it sure makes it smell better.
No, but I think the changes that were made were warranted. I don't think that they, I don't think there are any frivolous changes. We had to get the terminology right. We had to bring things up.
Now, I do agree with that because a lot of times they've just been rolled over in the terminology.
I like the bath water analogy.
You know, I was the youngest of the four children. I got the last bath in the same bath order that everybody else did.
I'm going to assume that we're going to be passing this tonight. As part of the discussion, I'd like to make a request that the district furnish us all with the latest copies of Robert Truitt's orders so we'll have new, instead of the AIP ones, we'll have the new Robert Truitt's order. That's all.
Yep. Yeah, because I didn't know if people were going to, some people bought their own, some people, they were provided so, you know, from the.
And they made it an updated version.
I bet you it's free online from Google Books or something. It's not probably still under copyright.
But yes, if, um. All right, so there is a motion on the table. Any further discussion? Call the vote.
Commissioner Brown Crouch?
Yes.
Commissioner Clifford?
Yes.
Commissioner Engelman?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawton?
Yes.
Commissioner Platt?
Uh.
Commissioner Poston?
Yes.
Commissioner Woolsey?
Yes.
Commissioner Carribean?
The next item regards the motion to adopt the proposed changes to the Use and Rate Ordinance. This is the first reading. So what this means is that it's going to go through discussions, revisions, and just like tonight, our speakers that came, thank you for coming and being involved, number one. And thank you for bringing that to light. So that's where we're at. There is a, there's a motion and now would be the discussion.
Did somebody make a motion?
No.
Do I need a motion?
Yes.
I make a motion that we adopt this schedule.
Second.
I think the motion.
Yeah.
Second.
Does this incorporate the waste order use and charge or?
Yes.
Because I will say, and I don't always, yeah, I do step outside the box. I like it outside. I happen to agree with Ms. Hemmerich. Some people, I mean, I have a late fee here and I called and I said, look, I got charged a late fee only because I didn't realize I had never paid my bill, you know. And my bill had jumped from an average of $40 a month. This month, my water bill was the lowest it's been in six months and my sewer bill was $86. But I do think if someone, and not saying, you're following as strict a policy as you should. You're the new district manager and you need to. But I do think if somebody comes to you and says, look, this really provides me a terrible financial hardship. Is there any way you would waive the $30? You call the water company and say, will you waive this fee? Yep, yeah, we will. I've called everyone and we still, and said, I don't want to give you my name yet, but I want to ask you if I called and asked you due to hardship, would you waive this fee? And pretty much everyone said, for a hardship, I would not say. Now, do you understand, you know, we have, we're supposed to send everything to the district manager, you have the final say so. And I understand 100% your following policy. And if you don't, we're the first person that comes down on you. But I do think we need to allow a little flexibility. Since he forbids us to hardship, I can't imagine going to divorce that he not going out on his own. So it will be, I will be a widow. And then I don't want to be charged a $30 fee.
He's right in that.
Well, and there, yeah, and there are times, like, just like whenever you get your bill about your car taxes, others in the appeal process, where you can say, you know, the high mileage thing or something like that, there have to be, there has to be extreme circumstances, you know, that that would apply to. Like my grandmother died, I was in her house, but the bill was still in her name. And then I was like, well, I got to switch it over, you know. So I was in the same boat that you were. So I do understand that, too. Anyone?
Well, I think that, you know, the situation, I think the allowance is made for hardship situations. But I think people need to send that in for the district manager. I think so.
Case by case.
Yeah, case by case. I don't think we should have a binding rule. But I think if people come in and they have a real hardship, I think some of it could be somewhat outsourced, you know.
I would suggest we pass it tonight and then request the staff to go over and review. To me, it's, when you're changing the name on an account, it's not the same as a new account fee. That's the way I see it. And I don't think you should have a fee for just changing names because it's not that much labor involved in just typing in somebody else's name. But I would suggest we pass it as is and we can go back. Am I right? We can go back and change it.
We had a first reading.
But we can go back and change it.
Revisions can be made.
But I would have the staff review the situation and come up with a suggestion for us next time. Or they can come up with a suggestion and mail it to us anytime and look it over and come in and say, but.
And is there a draft on our, on the webpage? We've got a lot of stuff on there. If we do that at this point.
Draft this on the webpage, I don't.
Probably worth of, of even a part of it.
Okay, I think that's a great idea. We pass this and then we have the staff take a look at it and then we could, if we need to revise it, we can.
You know, as, but Sandy was talking about the late fee, but I'm talking about the new account fee. So we're talking about two different things. And then, and Sandy could also request that we have the staff look at having some discretion on that late fee if they feel it's warranted. And that would be my suggestion there.
Yeah, because right now, he doesn't have that discretion. He's following the rules we set for him. But we need somewhere in there, give him a little discretion.
Right, okay.
You know, if you see this and you are concerned, yes, you can.
Yeah, the staff has the capability of looking through our history and if they don't, now those rules, these are always late. We're not going to give them this time. Or they can say, this person's always on time. You know, something happened to that family, whatever. And, you know, these people have a good relationship with us. They've always paid their bill and there is just like the, we just need to set up a policy. And I don't think we can do this tonight, but I think send that, that, those two things back to them. Have them to look it over and come up with something, come back to us or just email their ideas to us or whatever. But that would be my suggestion. Is there any other weird little thing in there?
I don't see anything that jumped down. I do hate the new fee. Don't care. But that's okay. Go ahead.
Yes, just please review the stuff that's highlighted in yellow. Those are the changes. And these changes came about from the consultant that you guys hired for us. And certainly, like Ms. Engelman said, you know, we're following the policy and the rules procedure that were, or the ordinance, not policy, but ordinance that was adopted previously. If you look in there, there has been some stuff about some corrections, some additions to allow people to enter into pay agreements, which we did not do before. And if you want us to be able to exercise judgment, absolutely that is, that goes up to you guys. And we can, we'll look at something and present it.
I'm agreeing with the sentiments expressed. Maybe compassion. But I, I think, I would have a vote either first reading with the ordinance and it's going to be in the final. And for the second reading. I think if we want staff to look at it again, I mean, fine. But then, just prefer the first reading and go back.
I feel like the staff wants to get this through before the first of the year. That's my feeling on it. It's something out there. I love it out there.
That's how we're going, Chris and I have thought, that's how we're going to set our revenues for the Waste Water Department based on this ordinance now. Whereas before, it was always part of the budget. Excuse me, I got to stood up. We want to set our revenues based on those rates for July 1st rather than wait as part of the budget process. We won't know if it's going to get changed or not. And that's why we wanted it approved separate from the budget. And that'll set our revenues when we have a revenue workshop.
And I don't think these fees, the new account and the, what was it? The late fee, I'm assuming that's not a big part of our budget. That even though it might be a big part of somebody's household budget, we can still work with that until we get it where we want it.
Sure.
Yeah. And, and I think us trying to figure out what this should be and what the policy be, we should be discussing that here now. We should leave that to the staff and they should bring it to us and then we should.
Well, let's vote on the, let's vote.
Alan.
Well, the only thing I was going to say was that if we do set up this, or have the staff set this up, again, we're starting to get into day-to-day operations here. And I'm not sure that we necessarily need to do that. But if we do ask the staff to set up the changes, you know, we had a situation where if they say no, that there not been a waiver, it's going to be, have to be a complete process included somewhere in the process as well. Because that will have to be thought about.
There was some added to the appeal process. If you look at the highlight on the last page, it was not an appeal process prior. We've added an appeal process that includes the district manager. We've added that as an addition, so there is an appeal process for residents. And I think it's quite open to appeal. And if Chris is okay with it, I think he will. But I can send a list of how much each of those fees that we've made in the last, let's say, calendar year.
To show the significance and then.
And let you all determine if it's significant or not.
And between the first reading, not only just the staff, but then that would also give some time to speak with the constituents and, you know, give them a heads up, you know, that this is, this is happening. Yes.
Well, I don't, I disagree with Alan. This is not buttoning to their day-to-day thing. We're just saying, go back and review it. Come up with suggestions that seem to be more appealing to people.
We have a call question basically on the floor. She asked us to go ahead and vote. So we have a call question.
Commissioner Brown Crouch?
Yes.
Commissioner Clifford?
Yes.
Commissioner Engelman?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawton?
Yes.
Commissioner Platt?
No.
Commissioner Poston?
Yes.
Commissioner Woolsey?
Yes.
Commissioner Carribean, 601.
All right, we're going to end soon a discussion of retiree health benefits.
Well, Lisa.
Yes.
There she is. Um, well, what I gather from what Lisa has sent us, and from what I've talked to Sandy's husband, I've talked to Black and Inez, and it doesn't seem to be anybody that can recall us ever voting as a commissioner to pay the retirement health insurance for our retirees. And, and... And as y'all recall, Mr. Hancock last spring told us that this was taking us down, uh, a road to, uh, financial ruin. And he said that other small towns and PSDs were getting out of it, and he couldn't figure out why we got into it. And there's, it doesn't seem to be record of us actually ever voting to do this. Am I right, Lisa, is that what you found out?
I wasn't able to find any minutes where it was passed. I have the determination letter from, um...
Please, can you please come back so we can, uh...
The only thing I recall was about two years ago, uh, our former CFO came in and said, we need to put money in this fund to do, have money in the future for our retirees' health benefit. And my question at that time was, will this save us money? She says, yes. And then I went back home and, uh, looked into it and found out we don't have the pay bills. I know, and it just seemed like a lie.
Uh, it's been that way since I've been here in chief place, maybe if you don't mind, he could speak, you've been here for forty years. Maybe you can tell us, and it's been here that long, right?
Can you please, uh, come front and tell us, uh, we don't have no kind of ready...
I don't know what you want me to tell you, other than, this is really my opinion, I don't, I don't remember a vote or anything, but I retired in two thousand nine with thirty years, and the benefits that were allowed to me was, uh, those benefits. When I left in two thousand nine, so I don't, personally, I don't see how the district can take that away from me after I retired, saying, now I'm not gonna pay you for those benefits. Um, but thinking about it, and if you look about it, I think the last time we had a meeting, somebody stated that in the last fifty years, we've only had like twelve people retire. So, I mean, we're not talking about every employee in the district that we have to fund for that, because it's not gonna happen. People are not gonna retire from, you know, from, with twenty-eight years, especially the way social security, not, retirement is today, how they're changing all those rules, that people have to work till they're sixty-seven and seventy-two and whatever. These guys ain't gonna make it on a fire truck, it ain't gonna happen. So, I mean, just from my point of view, I don't know when there was ever a date. All I know is when I retired, those were benefits that I expected when I le, when I retired for my short seventeen days.
And the only thing I saw written was in our, like I said, in our manual, that we vote on it every year.
And then, the handbook says that you may, that you may reconsider this, that it's kind of a catch-all so that the district is protected if they decide to change it. And as far as I know, Susan Gladman brought it up the same night we did the, um, presentation for the comp study. And she just basically told you guys that we, you had to start funding it, and we were starting with a hundred thousand dollars that year. And it was a very short discussion. Uh, but as far as the actual costs, we are an op, we are an optional employer by PIBA, which is the Public Employee Benefit Administration. And so we, we are not required to fund it, but at some point, we have chosen to adopt the state outline. Whenever that was, I don't know, but we basically follow the same outline as the state. And in May, when you brought it up during the budgeting, I got ahold of the actuary and asked her about making changes and what all would be required for that. And she stated that, well, first of all, we have to have a policy. So, I have, um, written a policy, and Rainey, um, Duke Sturz has the policy and is reviewing it right now for us to present to y'all, to approve the current policy so that we can then make changes to it. And what, what the actuary will do is value those changes for us. Now, I did, in, um, mid-September, got a breakdown from the actuary on how much each of the areas of the, um, retiring, and what the costs are for those. So, as you can, what, what this chart shows is that the active accrued liability, which is our active employees, and the inactive accrued liability is our retirees. If you look on the columns, pre-Medicare means our, um, liability for anyone that is not eligible for Medicare based on whether they're a member, an active member, or an inactive member. And then the same for the spouse, and then the next column is Medicare eligible, and then the last column is Medicare eligible for the spouse. Now, I did some, um, calculations from these. I guess I need to use them, too. Eliminating the spouse pre-Medicare and the spouse Medicare eligible would reduce our valuation for twenty-seventeen by almost two million. So, that's kind of a non, a no-brainer. And we're gonna make changes. Pardon?
Eliminate, what you mean?
Um, column two and column four.
Two spaces, okay.
Mm-hmm. And then eliminating the funding for Medicare eligible would reduce it another four million. And these are the valuations for twenty-seventeen, we are expecting a valuation from the, um, actuary, I think, the end of December, first of January, for July one, twenty-nineteen. So, as Mr. Hancock has told us, it was the seven hundred thousand dollars of fiscal year that we're accruing in costs, and we've only offset that by a hundred thousand. I guess we've made a payment this year, I don't know, have we, James?
Yeah, we did, plus three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, two thousand as well, four hundred and fifty-eight thousand, plus interest, right?
And so... If, the, the thing that I, I wanna mention here is that we don't have to pay anything. But I can tell you, for those of you that were at the meeting, at the, um, event, we've got people with twenty, twenty-five, thirty, thirty-five, forty, and next year, we're gonna have a forty-five-year one. And these people have dedicated their lives to the district, and many of them won't be able to retire until they're Medicare eligible, because they won't be able to afford, um, healthcare, and, um, to pay the full cost of it before they're eligible for retirement. All of our employees, uh, are now, most of our employees are under the class-three, um, classification for retirement. So that means for them to be eligible for full retirement, they have to have twenty-eight years. And if we were just to change it to that and still allow our people to be funded if they got twenty-eight years, I think we would have a lot of valuation reduced. But I would, I have to get with, first, the, um, actuary, which she said she can't do any valuations until she's finished with the July one. And then we also have to get with Rainey to make sure that it's legal for us to make these changes, which I'm, I, you know, I, from what I can see, they're prob, we probably are, because we're an optional employer, but we need to identify, how much time do we need to give the retirees if we're gonna change it? And how much, how much notice do we give current retirees that have spouses? Now, all of the PIBA benefits state that we have to offer retiree health, but we don't have to fund any of it. Mr. Hancock has made a point several times that just having to offer it causes us to have some sort of liability. I don't know why, that's just what he said. So, we're never gonna completely eliminate the liability, but we can significantly reduce it by looking at it and doing it in a fashion that is, um, fair to both the district, to the residents, and to the people that have committed their lives to this place. And I think that I'm halfway there in getting that done, there's some proposals I have to give to the actuary, but I, I just wanna emphasize that we have to go through a process to change it. Now, I, I, I don't know if we can retroactively change it, you brought this up, you wanted to change for July one, twenty-eighteen, or twenty-nineteen, I don't know if we can go back like that, we may have to say a future date we're changing it. But that's something that you guys have to decide, but those are, those are my comments about it. Currently, we have a very generous one. I mean, if you...
Like, we, we start paying after ten years.
We don't, we pay, um, a hundred percent of the employer portion if they got over ten years, which, like, Mr. Hancock said, that's, I mean, this is the state.
The state is twenty-eight or twenty-something, twenty-eight, right?
Not for retirees, there's, this is what the state uses, this is the same exact breakdown that the state uses for their retiree funding.
State employees can retire after ten years and get a hundred percent of their health insurance paid?
Employee portion, not the employ, not their employer portion.
If they're retire, if they're sixty-five, right?
They have to be sixty.
Sixty.
And retirees who retire before age sixty and have not met the twenty-eight years of service, service are required to pay the full premium. So, that's the employer and employee. So, we don't, we don't pay anything for that. And then...
Let me, yes, come in.
But those are for people after two thousand and eight.
How many, uh, employees are we talking about, retirees?
Currently, we have twenty-five.
Twenty-five. Yeah, we're paying a hundred percent for all?
No. No, we don't pay a hundred percent for any of them. They all have less than twenty-eight years. We have a few surviving spouses on the plan, we have, um, retirees with children, which is, uh, you know, somebody asked me about that, and I said, you guys gotta remember Sean Thurman. But, uh, so, that, we, they, they can elect those coverages, we don't have to fund it.
It's, and I'm gonna state the obvious here, uh, the federal people, they can print their own money, the state people can throw out taxes all over the place. We've only got two wet revenue streams, that's our waste water money and our property taxes. And we just can't levy some other tax to pay for all this. And another thing we've got coming due on us, we know that coming real soon, we're gonna have to pay a lot more insurance for those firmament. And that's gonna cost us money.
I, I heard you say that before, and I don't know what that is.
I'll tell you about it later.
But, um, I did wanna, um, also bring up that, um, I'd like to get the, the actuary to give us a valuation and maybe, 'cause right now, we, we're paying employer portion of the Medicare, whatever that is. And the actuaries are estimating how much that's gonna cost in five, ten, fifteen, twenty, sixty years. So, if we were to get a valuation with a set amount that we would pay for the Medicare supplement, because once an employee is eligible for Medicare, they have to go on it. Unless they're, unless they're a current employee at another state participating agency, then they're an active employee on active insurance. But, um, that might lower the valuation as well, and it's very possible that if we manipulate these numbers, we may be able to get down to less than two million in liability, which would be about two hundred, less than two hundred thousand dollars a year. I mean, right now, we're paying ten percent of what, what the valuation is, so I'm assuming it'd be ten percent. And if that's the case, we may be able to get it down to a, a cost that's manageable, and maybe even pay ahead on it, and then get it to where it's zero. That's how Somerville, um, the Somerville Water Works is, they don't have a liability, they've got it paid, so they just continue to pay a little bit each year and do it.
So, Alan?
What about the spouse then, you mean? We're, we're, we're paying for the spouse, too? But, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Alan.
If this is our budget programming of what we're gonna be looking at, where is this issue in this?
On my first, or, about it there.
Yes, sir.
I think Mr. Hancock, including the last time he was here in executive session, and he said it many a times, I don't miss that, that's why I didn't play basketball, um, that he would like to do a workshop on the OPEB and the liability with the commission. And you were chair, and I think Ms. Engelmann was as well. He would like to do an all-day workshop on the OPEB and how that accounting function comes into that, and explain it, get the detail, give you actual numbers, and he did say last time, it's not something we can take from seven million down to two million overnight, it's gonna take some time to do that. And if you recall this, what he said last time, so I think the best action would be to schedule that workshop, where we have all parties involved, and let that go from there.
Including whoever you, you were talking about.
Right, the actuary, right, right.
So, we need to look at modifying this to start with tonight, by sticking something else in there.
Somebody pulling out that, I don't want at any point to have an all-day workshop on anything. I can see a half-a-day device.
Sure, whatever y'all term it, sure.
But, I mean, you're gonna realize, it's you, but not me, or O, and we have a level that we reach ABD fulfillment, and four hours is fulfilled.
That, that's one option, the other option is to get some valuation estimates from the actuary and propose those, and see if they're acceptable.
I'm hoping she'll have something maybe by the end of January, you think?
Yes, ma'am. As far as the current valuation for July one...
That would change those numbers, right, so it's just what's based on the current policy.
Well, I, I'm assuming this is a little bit fluid here.
Sure, sure, absolutely, sure.
I, I just wanted to point out that we now have to skip another meeting into this.
A workshop or something, right? And, and remember, he's on the OPEB or, or, but board, he understands that a little more than any of us that are involved in the day. That's where he can get your deep dive into understanding it yourself.
That's what he was just explaining, yeah, that it's something that he has been bringing up several times this year, so hopefully, we can go ahead and get that set. And hopefully, yeah, it wouldn't be something that we necessarily need to take eight hours, so...
Sure, sure, I said all day, but a half-a-day, whatever works for y'all, sure.
That was important.
And the number side is nice, but you still have to see the way it's gonna impact people that may need to be grandfathered in at different levels, and what are they being told upon hiring as far as what benefits are being offered? Because, yeah, and, and structure it that way, because you got so many people starting at so many different levels, and I, I know what that has felt like, so I've been there, so...
Well, I guess one, not in chairman, I guess once we get the understanding of what's going on, we could begin to have, um, workshop to, so I can understand what's happening and...
Well, let's, let's circulate some dates, um, for availability through emails, um, and find out, you know, who can take a half-a-day off from work, who can reschedule their doctor's appointments, who can do what to get it done soon.
We're gonna need to find out, we gotta be able to do it in a first term.
Right, you'll check what's working.
I'll do that.
Right, oh, yeah, and you gotta talk to, yes, ma'am.
He'll make himself available, I think.
I just assumed that you were gonna take it to, send it to the administrative committee to be reviewed.
I just assumed that you were gonna take it to, send it to the administrative committee to be reviewed and then them come back with a recommendation, but workshop's the way to go too.
Well, if you wanted to educate the whole commission, which would not be a bad idea because year to year, you know, the chair people can change on those committees. I think the best and total understanding of, of any and all operations is the best way to go. So everybody can have the same type of education. Yes, sir, Mr. Platt?
What if, James, or Lisa could clarify the point that the district is required to offer retirees health encourage? The district is not required to fund it. I, I wonder if that was legislation, what the legislative intent was there?
First of all, the PIBA is the only one that can determine whether you're eligible for retiree health or not. That's the first point. We've had people that retired from our organization that had twenty-five years with the city of Charleston. So they went on the city of Charleston's retiree health fund, plan, not ours, because they didn't have enough time with us. So basically, the, once you're deemed eligible for retiree health, then it's according to what type, what entity it goes back to as to how it's funded. And as an optional employer of PIBA, we are allowed to make the decision on how we wanna fund it.
But some entity, some entity of course is required to fund it.
Yeah, a state or a school district or, I believe municipality too, if they participate in it. A lot of municipalities have gotten out of the PIBA health insurance, but that's because they have a five-hundred-person plan that they can self-fund, and it's cheaper for them. We're not really a prime candidate for self-funding. Our population is much smaller than that. We have about eighty people on the plan. And our demographics span the whole, whole gamut as far as where they fall for age and sex.
Madam Chair, I know she's single, but the hand up, I'm gonna jump first. This is a discussion of health benefits tonight. We've received no hard copies of anything, and I don't think it meant making a home video of it. And I would like to get to the point where we have paperwork that we can look at. It's all we're hearing now. This one over here, PIBA and Jane, and now we're gonna have some different members.
Just real quick, Mr. Platt, I think you were asking about how we would be, we had to offer it, but there was no, nothing about funding it. We don't have to fund it, right? So what that...
That's what I thought you said, too.
Right, but, you know, one thing is, is as far as not funding it, we have to offer them our plan, and then they would, they would have to pay the district the full amount of that. So when somebody leaves, they can, and they're not retired or whatever, or if we take, or if we do not fund that benefit when they retire, we have to offer them through the Cobra rules, basically, and through the policy to give them the same Blue Cross Blue Shield PIBA plan that we have, but they would have to pay the entire amount, correct? If we don't...
If we change the, as far as for retiree funding, if we were to change the policy, yeah.
Yes.
But currently, that's not our...
So they would be eligible to stay on our plan, but they would have to give us a check every month.
Right, so that's why there's still some sort of liability that'd be on the...
Yes, sir. If you don't, if you guys decide not to fund it. So we, we wouldn't be paying, the district wouldn't be paying anything, but that person can stay on our health plan through the state. But they would have to provide the district with a check every month for the employer and employee portion.
I think Chris Engelman has a good idea. I mean...
Get it all in paper, right?
Well, I mean, that's why we're having the discussion, just to have all these issues brought to light and then figure out a strategy to fix it. Please find out how quickly, when Mr. Hancock's available, so we can schedule that. And then based off of that information, if we move it into the administrative committee, then we'll have something to work with. You could call it administrative workshop or just a workshop. Okay, I'm going to end the discussion on this. Committee and James Island Public Service District representative reports from the Solid Waste Committee meeting on November twenty-sixth.
Well, the Solid Waste Committee, we, you know, Desmond, he, we were going to have a further discussion that day last week. And he and I both had some stuff that we had to move the meeting now to probably tomorrow morning.
And were y'all able to get with the county?
Yeah. Um, he has met with the city and made some discussion, but it's still, again, he had some things he needed to go over and some things had to remove, um, so...
So you'll, there'll be a reschedule of...
Um, we're going to be talking tomorrow morning about it and scheduling. We're gonna speak about it this week, and just a holiday made it where there were a lot of people who had to move meetings around. And then everyone's been sick lately, so it's been put on a, kind of a postponed date.
Would, would January meeting be too late to revisit this? Or is it something you think y'all could summarize in a...
Um, summarize it in an email or... Yes, we're going to be at least reaching out and again, when we are able to get...
Just with the data, because there's no decision. There's nothing...
Exactly, so... Yeah, we'll be getting in touch and letting you know. We just need to go over some things. I have to come with it here.
About the solid waste and about these ferry landing saying that they are at capacity.
Yes, yeah, so it's going over that. And, yeah, he has some things he needs to just go over.
For household...
But, yeah, we need to sit and just go over most of the work and all that. So we will be doing that over the next weeks. And then I can get in touch and let you know. But again, just some things, but had to postpone from last week since it was a one day, sort of like, we'll have to do it within the next day or two.
Perfect.
Because that was Wednesday morning.
Madam Chairman, don't forget the holiday is coming up and, I mean, it's, it really doesn't make any sense for us to schedule anything now until the official...
Right, definitely, that's why, and that's why I said if the January meeting is okay...
And, but that's why I'll be emailing and letting you all know this update.
I think we should... We got a lot of, I'm not finished. We got a lot of things that we need to be thinking about. And so while we have the time off for the holiday, we could be thinking about some strategies on all these issues that we talked about today. So I think trying to do anything now before the holiday doesn't make very much sense.
And if I may, yeah, just reread, that was one of the issues, is, you know, people have been traveling because of the holiday. And especially, again, this came in mid-last week, in the middle of all that. So, yeah, we just had to postpone one week. So, yeah, I'll be in touch this week to, and update.
Correspondence and news articles?
There is, there was none listed on there, but I do have, and somehow Ms. Brown Crouch and Mr. Platt's were lost in the mail. I've asked them to send them, but these are the invitations for the Charleston Metro Commerce. It's Mr. Lawton. So I emailed the guy and said they could come, unless you guys got it at home, I don't know.
They sent it to my house.
Oh, they did? Did you get it at home? Oh, okay.
Thank you, my friend.
Okay, perfect. Well, thank you.
And I would just like to say thank you to James Island for participating in the city of Charleston, Holiday Brigs and Bali Beach, and having a presence and, and all the job do all the time. So thank you very much for that.
To see both, one of us that sent you our reservation, did you do that, or we still need to do this?
I did that.
Thank you very much. Are there...
So is everybody going?
Yes.
Is there anyone signed up for the oral petitions?
Did we have someone again?
Yep.
You want to speak?
Susan Milliken.
Okay. Um, I had not planned to speak again, but I didn't really know what was on y'all's agenda. And this discussion of retiree health benefits, I get really emotional. I get really mad, so excuse me. Your fire jobs, your solid waste people, and your wastewater people, these are the most difficult jobs in our community. And for them to not get retirement health benefits that a professor gets is outrageous. And you guys need to take care of your people. And it's one thing to cut corners, and it's one thing to cut money. No one wants to do these jobs. They kill people. These guys work so hard. And for my husband to get retiree health benefits and them to not double my bill. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item would be executive session. Are there any issues that we need to be dealing with?
Yes, we need to go into the executive session and discuss personnel matters.
I'll make a motion. Do you want to execute?
Any discussion, if it's on a personnel matter, which means there's not a lot that we can discuss, so first of all, on the vote.
Commissioner Brown Crouch? Commissioner Clifford?
Yes.
Commissioner Engelman?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawton? Commissioner Platt?
No.
Commissioner Folsen?
Yes.
You're saying...
We have our back from executive session. No action was taken.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Our second motion.
I have lost the best friend.
Commissioner Brown Crouch?
Yes.
Commissioner Clifford?
Yes.
Commissioner Engelman?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawton?
Yes.
Commissioner Platt?
Aye.
Commissioner Folsen?
Yes.
Commissioner Woolson?
Yes.
Motion carries now.